He said you could tell that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and peel my.
Straight down to the man.
We call them Metropolis City Council order Monday, November the fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Canada.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Short.
Here.
And Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the ten twenty-four sixteen.
We need those.
Play it first.
No. Oh, yeah, we do, we do that first, let's do it. Stand for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly father, we come tonight thanking you for what you do for each and every one here. Dear heavenly father, be with Mr. Mizell tonight. Be with the ones, dear heavenly father, in our community that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick, be with the caregivers. Be with this council that each and every decision that we make here will be for the better of the community. Be with our nation, dear heavenly father. Be with our armed service personnel now only on core and ground, but here in the United States. Guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. That's our precious name, amen. I don't know what kind of surgery Jerry sent me an email Saturday and said he was running late on dialysis and he had, was going to have some kind of surgery in the morning and he didn't go into detail and I did call to find out. Maybe it was something minor.
I don't know, he's back and he's taking it off.
Okay. Alright, need a motion now to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
In twenty-four sixteen. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Citizens request. Mayor's report, motion to accept pay application number three for the Metropolis water treatment influent, mechanical fine screen replacement in the amount of eighteen thousand, one seventy-four, thirty-seven. On design bill.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McManus. Second by Mr. Barfield. Discussion, Frank, you have some?
Uh, just let you know that Linda has the pay request and then Trish will go.
Okay. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept application for payment to Freeman Environmental Services for demolition of twelve sites FEMA property in amount of two thou- two hundred and one thousand, two ninety, forty.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Barfield, that, uh, there is a, uh, a retainage on that that we will hold until we see grass rolling and, uh, then we will paint the remainder. If it don't rain for long, we may not paint till next year. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire. McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept proposal to paint additional specifications to Happy Hearts Building in the amount of five thousand, two hundred dollars to John Brown Paint.
Second.
And I think, uh, I thank Mr. Barfield, I mean, uh, Mr. Brown is up there spray washing that building tonight. Uh, he has been, he has been, uh, very, very cooperative as far as the business is uptown. Uh, they had the Happy Heart, I mean, the, uh, open house Sunday and he did not want to do anything up there to jeopardize that. So he is doing that tonight, he'll start painting tomorrow, I guess. We do have a motion? Okay, I'm sorry.
The mural that's on the side of it.
He will protect that.
He'll protect it now and I'm hoping that the new paint and the mural will kind of match.
They, they, the paint is going to be a light, uh, it's kind of, it's, it's the same color as the one across the street. Kind of beige, uh, creamy color. Yeah, it'll, uh, uh, it'll ma- really, it'll match the mural a lot better.
Well, that's good, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, because they painted the mural on there after we, uh, you know, after we already painted that.
Yes.
Yes, it will be protected and, uh, to both of there, is there anything else that, call roll please, we do have the, is on roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next motion, motion to appoint, need a motion to appoint non-candid to the library board to fill seat vacant by Mr. Carroll.
I'll make that motion.
Second, motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. McManus. Discussion, call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next motion, motion to accept bid for work to be completed in the rear easement of Crestview between Metropolis Street and North Avenue in the amount of fifteen-five from BKW Services.
Second.
That is the same company too that did the, uh, underground between Crestview and Carter. So, we do have a motion, we do have a second, call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept granting Clearwave at the easement titled Two Little Tractor.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Barfield, discussion. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire. McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, under the mayor's report, we, uh, Clearwave is, uh, I don't know how, where we want to, uh, how we want to handle the approving. They have several different, uh, I did talk to Mr. Barfield briefly as the chair of the Waterlight Street about the easements going on, they have a permanent easement, uh, through the state of Illinois across the highway. I got a copy of that and sent it to Chad yesterday or Friday, Thursday, yes. And, uh, as they're moving through, uh, I do know right now that they're looking at the college, one other place that's not been approved. How, do we want to take that to the, uh, as, as they bring this in, uh, do we want to approve it through a committee meeting and then bring it to the council? Or what would, what would be your, uh?
Well, what would expedite it?
Expediting would be to adopt an ordinance that authorizes the mayor to sign right-of-way permits when it's recommended by the engineers in the planning department, so that, that would make it much faster. Then, then you're not dealing, because otherwise you're gonna have some that are, some you're gonna have one block long, some you're gonna have, uh, a mile long and, and you're gonna wind up, our timing will always meet the timing. And, and frankly, it's not just Clearwave, it could be, we've had other, uh, utility entities approach us. There's one that wants to go down, uh, Fourth Street at some point, they say, so, uh, now we haven't heard back from them. We don't have plans, but I mean, this is a routine administrative type thing that, uh, as long as we use forms like you've approved in the past with Clearway, these agreements that provide for them to indemnify us and stuff like that. I think what we, we'd probably recommend is we simply do an ordinance that says, you know, going from this date forward, um, the mayor's authorized grant for execute right-of-way permits upon the recommendation of the planning department and the city engineers or something like that.
That's the same way is, is book buying for Frank back there.
Exactly, it's the same thing, it really, it really is. So, no, you don't, you're not having to do this.
Will you do that?
Yeah, we'll prepare.
Alright, thanks for that.
S- next item on, uh, it's not on agenda, I just wanted to, uh, had a great, uh, open house over the, uh, weekend uptown, great weather, you know, seemed like plenty of people. Uh, everybody was, uh, very appreciative of, uh, of the advertisement and things like that. In the process, we've, uh, now uptown, uh, I guess there's been, uh, four places, three places that's been approved by the grants, maybe four. We may have one more out there pending and then we're painting the, uh, the Happy Hearts Building. There's, there's some more movement uptown as far as buildings, we, we do know that there's some looking going on up there. Uh, some of the merchants up there asked me about the sidewalks. Back several years ago, we actually had a company come over from Kentucky that actually, uh, I guess maybe had something to do with the original sidewalks as this building. We, uh, supposed to been a, anyway, it turned into a real fiasco. Uh, the ceiling and things like that. Uh, we had problems with the prevailing wage part of it and whatever, because I think of the contract, best amount I asked Rick every day if you remember exactly what it was, but it was like thirty thousand dollars. I mean, it was a pretty high-priced little deal, you know, when I was, uh, from the, after it was all over and everything like that, it looked decent for a little while, but it didn't stay that way very long. So, last Thursday, my Rick and I walked up and, uh, get a sandwich at the cafe up there and I actually asked, uh, Mr. Brown if he would, if he could recommend something that could cover those, the sidewalks. And he actually told me that they had a paint that was a non-slip, had something in it that, uh, you could, uh, roll on the sidewalks and that it would dry and you could put it, he said thirty-five degrees, I wouldn't, I don't know that I'd want to push that envelope too far, but anyway. So I asked him to give me a, just a estimate on a price of what it would cost to do the, it, it amounts to two full city blocks. And then you have a little section in front of the carpenter's local and the old carpenter building, Blaine's building. And then you've got a little section in front of Superman Museum and the, in the, uh, Mid Country Bank. So, calculating that would be two full city blocks plus, uh, a half. I guess you'd kind of, well, it's really half of a half, I guess. So, uh, because it's, it's just one building in front of each one of those, you know, a hundred and fifty foot, probably something like that. Anyway, Johnny sent me a rough, uh, thing back and said that, uh, he looked at the extended forecast. Temperature-wise, weather-wise, it's supposed to be above fifty-five to sixty degrees over the next two weeks. He says he can get it done, uh, he can, uh, it'd be about seven days. He gave us a price of someplace around six thousand dollars, that's time and materials to actually, uh, paint those. Now, if, uh, we pressure wash them, which we pressure washed them once, can't remember how long ago it was, it's been within the last eight or ten months, which our guys are very capable of pressure washing them. And, uh, if it's something that we think we want to do, uh, just upgrade the uptown. Now we have the buildings that's being painted, uh, we have our building painted. I know there's gonna be two more painted up there on Main Street, uh, which is Mr. McKnight, McKnight's building. Uh, I think they, uh, they got their grant for that. And, uh, if it's something that the city council would want to move forward with, get that done before bad weather. Well, we have to do something, that's what got us in trouble last time because there wasn't no maintenance on the sidewalks and they had to go back and pay all that money to redo everything. Well, Johnny will, he said he would, uh, he would, uh, you know, fill the voids and you're gonna have a few around the curves and stuff like that. And I asked him, I said, "Well, how long potentially can this last?" And he said, "Well," he said, "it'll last five to seven years pretty easily." Well, if you figure that, it's this, what we did up there was about no more than ten years, I wouldn't think, if that long. And it was thirty-something thousand dollars and it hasn't lasted worth a hoot.
We've used the same kind of paint where I work, we're painting flooring in maintenance shops. I paint it in the back, it's been over five years and there's no place on this earth that gets more abuse than that floor in the shop. And it's stayed on there.
Well, you know, every, I think we're on a, I think we're on a good roll, you know, as far as, uh, making the uptown district, uh, more highly appealing. Uh, there is some movement up there as far as businesses and things like that. Uh, I know I can't, uh, I know I can't, we can't ask for a motion here today. Uh, but is it something that you want, would like to, uh, we can certainly move forward with it and, uh, for that amount of money and approve it on an expenditure and let Johnny go ahead and do it and then bring, you know, send us a bill, as long as we get a accurate quote within, you know?
I think it's the least that we could do for the people uptown.
Well, we're gonna have to do some, you know, our, our whole period and the whole council is, is on the same page. You know, if we get, uh, enough to take the whole grant, that's a great thing. You know, uh, everybody is, is, that's wanted, has got a part of it. Uh, we, we actually talked the other day, if you remember, if it's not all used on Market Street, then we're gonna allow the veins coming off of Market on Sixth and Seventh to apply if they choose to, if there's any money left. And then we're gonna move from there, hopefully, uh, next year, in the next budget year, we're gonna appropriate some for, uh, downtown on Ferry. And, uh, so, uh, if we, if we can complete, complete all the uptown necessary things, we've got the two new poles, uh, they should be in anytime, we've got all the lamp post paint now, all the benches are painted, all the spook change and everything like that's painted. Uh, we'll trim trees again, uh, maybe here very shortly and, uh, so is that something that, uh, y'all would like to?
Is a, is a, is this, uh, putting this stuff in there, is this?
It actually comes already in it.
They're not, uh, keep them slipping?
It's a, it's called a non-skid paint.
Well, I'm all for, all for that, uh, is it gonna be snow removal friendly?
It's not that rough.
You mean to, would it damage it?
It, it would be like taking paint from sand, but it's not sand.
It's got, it's, it's got a.
Thing is, when it snows and the store owner goes out there and he's trying to clean his sand.
Oh, it's smooth.
Is he gonna be able to clean the snow off of it?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's as smooth as what it is now. Uh, actually, the ones up there now, if you've ever really looked at them, uh, they have a, uh, invention type, you know, they're not smooth like a concrete sidewalk, they're, they're kind of coarse. And, uh, he looked at them, I was up there, in fact, I went back up Thursday afternoon, he said, "This'll work great" because you're not, you don't have a slick finish in the first place, by the time they put this paint on it. Uh, uh, he says it'll last, you know, very, it's very durable, you know, it's, it's, uh.
I think we're gonna commit to the uptown project, we don't commit all the paint.
Okay.
I think what they do, all we can do to help them get more business.
As far as I know, as far as cosmetic, that's probably about all we can do until they move forward with what they're doing and stuff like that. And there may be a few, uh, odd ends and we actually got the, uh, the railing and everything around the Superman statue painted last week too. So everything up there is fresh except the sidewalks, so, uh, if you choose to, I, I, I think everybody up there would appreciate. We can't make a motion.
As a miniature, you know.
I can do it off of expenditure and then just bring it back for, when he sends, when we get the bill, we'll bring it back to pay the bill, if everybody's accepting.
I was up there Sunday at those open houses, those people are doing a good job attracting people to come here.
And what?
They really are, and they were extra nice.
I don't want to paint that old sidewalk the same color there and now. But what, if it's acceptable use for you guys, I'm not, I don't know that I'm brave enough to pick that color. Uh, but I'm brave enough to get a sample and, uh, I'll just, I'll just walk up there.
This makes you go beat a guinea pig and you go up there and tell them what color you're gonna put down.
No, I don't. Uh, yeah, streets of gold.
Painted gold.
And, and I'll get a splotch, you know, three or four different colors and just go down through there and maybe take it over to the chamber and say, "What do you think would complement the most of the building?" And, uh, any kind of, uh, uh, brownish or something like that will be, you know, will blend right in with what, what's up there now. So, uh, if that's acceptable to you guys, let's, let's do that.
Do it.
Okay. And that is all I have. Mr. Corporate Counselor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had met, uh, I think it was last week when we, we talked about, or maybe two weeks ago when the ordinance committee, we talked about Comcast cable franchise and if you recall, we had, or maybe Waterlight Street, we had guys here. And, uh, I was simply gonna prepare a cover ordinance to the agreement. And, uh, it, when I started to do that, I started looking back at our old stuff and, uh, then I thought, well, uh, I looked at the statute, state statute on it and said, you know, there's authority for granting these franchises, but there was authority for also adopting ordinances and that. I thought, well, maybe I ought to check to see if we had an ordinance. Well, lo and behold, we do have an ordinance, in fact, we got a whole chapter in the code book that's very complicated, by the way. So, before I got the cart, hit of the horse too far, which is very important, I said, uh, I thought I better say whoa and, and, um, hand this out and let's talk about this maybe this week some in committee again. We got committees, I know it's not on the agenda, but I just figured we'll go ahead, if you don't mind, we'll talk about it, we'll pick one. But, and, and I've written you a memo here, it kind of explains it, so if you think of it, bring this with you, uh, this week. But essentially, what, what, what we, what we've done, back when Comcast franchise expired in two thousand and ten, before that, they sent us a letter saying they, they wanted to exercise their right to enter into, uh, formal renewal process, if you will. But they'd be happy, they wanted to preserve that right, but they wanted, they were happy to sit down and do informal, which even our ordinance lets us do informal, it says, goes through all of this, this, this thirty-eight pages that we, somebody did in nineteen ninety-six, um, goes through a whole lot of detail about app, applying for work, the, uh, for a first-time franchise, um, but it, it makes it clear that you're supposed to also actually have an application for renewal. Now, it doesn't give you much guidance, it spells out everything goes in the first one, but it doesn't take a squad about what goes in a renewal application, okay? So I've been trying to read this and go through it and come up with one, and that's what I will probably bring to you on Wednesday, is a, a draft, uh, uh, a franchise application, okay? Now, back here towards the back, like I said, it says notwithstanding sections one twelve, one twenty-five through one twenty-sup or other, you can have a, the franchisee, that's Comcast, can just simply submit a proposal for renewal in accordance with this federal statute, which I've looked at, and which, and that's basically the informal process. Well, I guess you could say that this agreement we worked on is that proposal. But what we still have to do in spite of that is there's nothing that says in here that you can waive the application. So I think we have to have an application, even though we've gone informal. The application is supposed to be accompanied by a fee of five thousand dollars unless you waive, which I'm not sure anybody here wants to waive five thousand dollars to Comcast, okay? So, uh, so I've put, I've already made Mr. Kelly aware that there's gonna be some stuff coming that we're gonna have to do. But the, the key component of this whole thing is, it breaks down into two steps. One, we decide to grant a, we decide to approve the application or the proposal, if you will. Then we go back and we have to approve the actual agreement, okay? Each one of those is supposed to have its own opportunity for public comment, okay? Um, the application, it says you're supposed to give a notice and say it's available for anybody and you'll accept public comment. The agreement itself has to have a public hearing on it, so we're gonna have to put at least probably two notices in the paper. We're gonna have to have one that says, "Hey, if you want to comment on their application or their general proposal, you got to this date to do it." Where I have to have one says, "We're gonna have a public hearing," so I'd say probably one night, kind of like we do other stuff. So, instead of meeting at seven, we'll meet at six-thirty or whatever, or six o'clock and let the public come in and comment, and those comments are to be directed at the proposal as well as issues with service. You know, we, we've had a lot of meetings and we've brought up these issues we've had with service, both at the consumer level as well as at the city staff level. But we now need to really make sure that the public has an opportunity to do that before we pass it. My concern, and like I say, in getting the cart ahead of the horse was, uh, if we were to go ahead and pass those, uh, by ordinance, then somebody later could come back and say, "Well, we didn't get, you didn't follow your own ordinance, we didn't get the opportunity to be heard." Uh, and so, um, you know, it's been six years, why rush it? Uh, so, I mean, let's just do it right if we're gonna do it. And so, um, let's, let's make sure we do allow the opportunity for public comment. And, uh, so I will bring you an application, we can mess around with a little bit, play with, uh, and, uh, I will also, we'll also talk about when we might do, get the application back, when we might have public comment period, when we might have public hearing and stuff on Wednesday, if that's okay. So, um, probably shouldn't have done this at the outset, but like I said, we started following informal and it wasn't until I really got down to the process of formal adoption, I realized, well, there's some more steps we really need to take to make sure we comply.
Mr. Taylor, would, uh, Clearway be considered a cable, be?
They're a, they are a, they're an internet provider, okay? And there is a little, there is a difference under the law.
Okay.
Um, the other thing is, they're not asking for like franchise. Yeah, oh, you're like, well, now, don't get me wrong, you can impose, what, what we're doing there is saying, "Hey, you want to use our right-of-ways, these are our easements, our right-of-ways, we'll give you a permit under these conditions." Now, some towns do impose a permit fee for use of right-of-ways, we never have. Now, whatever we impose, we have to impose across the board, everybody has to pay the same thing, okay? Uh, this is a franchise, um, there are some other types of franchises, I guess, that, uh, the law allows you to issue, co- cable communication seems to be the, uh, the most common one. Yes, they provide internet service, but this really covers their TV, their tele, that, that service is what it does.
They're not probably just looking to comment.
Well, I tell you where we, we, one of the things we'll do with them as soon as we get done with this is we'll do the poll sharing agreement, because they do use a fair number of our polls and all our other folks, uh, pay poll sharing fees, okay? Uh, uh, Mr. Kovak's company pays poll sharing fees, okay? And, uh, they're, uh, anybody that uses our polls, now Clearway so far has not asked to use polls. If they would, they'd have to sign a poll sharing agreement and pay for the polls they use as well.
They're boring everything.
They're, they're putting everything underground.
Okay.
Which has its own challenges, but, yeah, anyway. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know, that's why we're not quite ready with Comcast yet, Mr. Kelly may be in for a surprise, but.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, it'll be alright.
He thought even then had trouble with us.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I thought so too, uh.
I wish people on that one, now, they were kind of, they were right with you, but they were, uh. Is that all, Mr. Abel?
That's all, that's all right.
Committee reports, Waterlight Street, Mr. Barfield, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor, uh, this is, uh, six items from the Waterlight Street community meeting, held on October twenty-sixth. I'll make the motion on the following six.
Mr. Barfield, the first one is the one that I called you about with the update only.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I think, Doug, do you want to speak to that for Mr. Barfield?
Sure.
Sure. So, on, um, we talked at the Water Light Street about the Marbury Drive, the manhole replacement and sewer replacement there. Uh, we went back and did a little more investigating on our end for the engineering and surveying part of it. And we have all the information we need, but we're now talking to contractors, trying to get some prices together on what the actual cost will be. Uh, he's still getting his numbers together, but as soon as we get some numbers on what the cost will be, we bring it back to you to just let you know what the anticipated cost will be for it. But he's, uh, he's working on that right now.
All right, you think this might be available Wednesday?
Uh, possibly, yes.
Why, if not, you know, whatever.
Or, yeah, if not, it should be freezing, but, uh, that would be nice if we could go ahead and get it by Wednesday.
If it's not Mr. Barfield, we, uh, surely we'll see, uh, of course, next week is Thanksgiving week. Uh, if we get the information back, we can always put it back on the agenda on the twenty-eighth to get it approved.
All right, appreciate it.
All right, so that was just an update on, to, to bring back an earlier date.
All right, do we need a motion on that? Just that, that right here?
Yes.
Thank you, Dad. I will make motion to accept the purchase of a foot flume with sensors from heartland controls in amount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars for wastewater treatment plant.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus, Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the purchase of four manhole risers for shulte supply in amount of one thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars for wastewater treatment plant.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus, Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the purchase of parts to rebuild the last Marlowe Kibble Sledge Pump at the wastewater treatment plant in amount of two thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars from Liberty Process Incorporated.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus, Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the purchase of a jet nozzle for Nostec in the amount of three thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus, Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept authorizing a blanket purchase order to S and S Industries in amount of ten thousand dollars for Palmer at the wastewater treatment plant.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Next committee report, ordinance. Short, sir.
This also comes out of the October twenty-sixth meeting. First item is adopting ordinance of adopting travel expense policy. I'll make that a motion.
Two oh one six twenty-two.
Motion made by Mr. Short, second by Mr. Hall. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our report is now.
Twenty-two.
Second item is to adopt ordinance of adopting the child bereavement leave policy. I'll also make that a motion, call, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Short, second by Mr. Hall. That ordinance would be number twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last two items on the list, the first reading only, the first one, an ordinance authorizing lease of properties acquired with FEMA hazard mitigation grant funds, the second being an ordinance amending the sick leave benefit policy of the city of Metropolis. I just want to book for those back to next meeting.
All right. So we've been running all along. Department heads. You passing?
I don't even know. Frank's, I don't know.
Frank?
I'm just trying to pick up the Mary. She does more job of it. Nothing but time, thank you.
Next item, Matthew Gonzoni, chat.
Uh, in your packets is your, um, designated ordinance for city of Metropolis to establish a creative enterprise zone. Part of that ordinance, uh, one of the exhibits is your intergovernmental agreement with the village of Joppo, city of Portport, and Massac County. The ordinance saying the intergovernmental agreement are a, uh, framework of how the zone will operate, function, who will administer the zone, its benefits, terms of, uh, benefits, and, uh, your arrangement with the other applicants and how you will, they will manage or maintain the zone for fifteen years if we proceed. And as we are starting to conclude and wrap up our application and submitting that by the end of the year, these are some of the final documents that each of the actors will be signing, uh, agreeing to.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place an ordinance establishing enterprise zone upon its passage.
Motion made by Mr. Short, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Make a motion, the ordinance be adopted as presented, be an ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty-four?
Yes, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Short, second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, no business. New business. Miscellaneous reports. Payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. McGuire. Second by Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, payment of miscellaneous bills. Mr. McGuire. And Mr. McManus. Call a roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
On your reminders, of course, the open house is already gone. November the fifteenth, Tuesday, renew Metropolis council chambers, four P M. Wednesday, the sixteenth, various committees, which will be right here, we're just gonna have a hoot all afternoon. City Hall will be closed November the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth for Turkey Day. Saturday, December the third, Christmas parade. Juana Spanco breakfast. And Saturday, December the tenth, is the Community Center Holiday Market Bazaar. Anything else for the good of the cause? Thank y'all for your time and.
Barfield.
Yes.
Canada.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
McGuire. McManus. Short.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.